Welcome to the Bradenton City Council. At this time, I'm going to ask by having our pledge and invocation as always, that I'd like to call, but the invocation by Dylan Kern, Associate Pastor at Bradenton Christian Reform Church. Please come forward. Please stand.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Father in heaven, this morning I bring these civil servants before you as they prepare to serve in the calling that you have set before him, them. These men and women have devoted themselves to the service of the city of Bradenton to do the best in their power, to seek righteousness, uphold justice, and to serve for the greater good of all those who live under their leadership. Father, I thank you for the common grace that you supply to all of your creatures so that they might capably do good and useful things. You use your instruments, all of them, to your ends for the good of your creatures, and yet, Father, we all know in our hearts the ready temptations of sins, especially those sins related to power. Believing ourselves to be serving the best interests of even the least of these, we use ungodly means to manipulate one another and control what should be a democratic process. Believing our causes to be just and right, we don't consider the means by which we pursue our ends. Unwilling to submit to the body of men and women we have agreed to work together with, we lament and complain when decisions don't go our way. So, Father, I pray that you would give these men and women a spirit of humility, that they remember that they are servants, not leaders, representatives, not change agents. As they deliberate and vote, I pray that they would place the citizens of the city of Bradenton in the forefront of their minds, tear their hearts away from all self-interests, that they would be at the beck and call of those they have committed to serve, even on those matters which are mundane with no significant moral consequence. I pray that in humility they would set others before themselves, recognizing that no one in this room has all the right answers, and that Republican or Democrat, they need each other. Father, you know far better than we do that none of us are righteous here on earth. Every one of us left to our own devices is completely wicked, unable to do so much as unable to desire what is good, let alone pursue it. Even our abilities are weak, tainted by the curse we brought into this world when we sinned. And yet, I thank you that in the limited way this is well enough understood by our commissioners that they request ministers to pray for their meetings. Father, may your Holy Spirit restrain sin and strengthen the hands of all in this room. May their work reflect the glory and beauty of Christ, the Creator of all that was, is, and is to come. May their work serve no obstacle to the faithful proclamation of your gospel in the city of Bradenton, even as they seek the good of all of its citizens. I pray this in the name of Christ Jesus, our Lord, who lives and reigns with the Father and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and good morning. We'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
Today's proclamation is for 2023 Black History Month. Councilwoman Coachman will be reading it on your behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proclamation. By virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Bradenton, I do hereby issue this proclamation honoring Black History Month, February 2023. Whereas Black History Month is observed annually in February to encourage all citizens to have a deeper understanding of history and acknowledge the struggle for equality and freedom for all citizens. And whereas in 1915, Dr. Carter G. Woodson founded the organization known as the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, and was instrumental in the origin of Black History Month. And whereas Black and African-Americans have continued to help enrich and shape the lives of all communities through their contributions in arts, law, science, and politics. And whereas the 2023 Black History Month theme of Black Resistance represents the ongoing quest for liberty, freedom, and justice for all. And whereas the city of Bradenton wishes to acknowledge the lifelong sacrifices and successes for all Black and African-Americans, and stands firmly in remembrance of the past and looks optimistically for all to thrive and be respected in their communities. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as Mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim February 2023 as Black History Month in Bradenton, and urge all citizens to recognize the significant contributions and challenges faced by Black and African-Americans throughout our nation's history. Jean Brown, Mayor, February 22, 2023.
Thank you.
And I would like for Dr. Sharon Jefferson to please come up and accept this proclamation for the community.
It's quite appropriate for Dr. Jefferson to be accepting this because she is a pillar, a strength, and a challenger in this community.
All right, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk.
Next will be a presentation for Fire Department Employee Recognition.
Okay, Chief.
Good morning.
Good morning. Tim Gear, Fire Chief, Bradenton Fire Department. I'm here once again to recognize an employee that's retiring. I did kind of warn everybody that we'd have many of these. I think we have one more in a few months coming that that we'll be doing, but I wanted to keep doing these individually because it really does take away from somebody's recognition if we line them all up and try to get them all at one time. And then trying to get folks to come back once they're retired is near impossible. So, you know, so we still have a little bit of control, you know, them being still employed, if you will. So, this is Ernie Pena. He's a lieutenant at the Fire Department. And Lieutenant Pena made history on 2/25/1993, being the first Hispanic-American employee hired by the BFD. And that was a big deal for him many 30 years ago. Ernie was recognized in 2006 as BFFA Fire Officer of the Year and as a member of the Special Operations Team. Not only is he a member, but he helped found the team and was part of that initial crew that helped me and another guy get that team going. Through the years, he has amassed an extraordinary amount of wisdom and experience to provide the best service possible in any scenario. Nearly 30 years of, no, it's not nearly anymore. It's 30 years as of Saturday. Friday concluding his shift is 30 years to the day, which almost never happens. So, he's done the full pull. Ernie has been and remains a role model, a mentor, example of physical aptitude, an exemplary employee with a naturally positive attitude. Lieutenant Pena without question instills the BFD core values and leads by example. And I got to tell you, you know, talking with his peers and my coworkers, that we've never heard Ernie even remotely say a harsh word towards anybody. And such a humble guy and just a great person all the way around. Growing up, the father of Pena's friend was a firefighter. Firefighter. He was a cool dad in the neighborhood and had a positive impact on him. When choosing a career, Pena, Ernie liked the idea of helping people and knew that being a firefighter suited him. A fellow classmate from the Fire Academy told him that BFD was accepting applications and hiring. Pena had familiarity with Bradenton, so he applied and got hired. And I believe that was by Chief Hackle at the time. Do you remember?
Chief Horn.
Chief Horn. Okay, so Chief Vernon Horn, if anybody knows him, can remember that far back. So anyways, the opportunity led for him to join the BFD family in 1993. He moved up the ranks and, and once again currently serves as lieutenant. He had so many interesting moments at the BFD, it's hard to single out one. He's had many numerous awards and recognitions. He's the first Hispanic officer at the BFD. He's of Cuban descent. And you do not want to confuse that with Puerto Rican or Nicaraguan, as I learned through the years. And it is possible to have a Nicaraguan, a Puerto Rican, and a Cuban at the same fire station, and they all get along well. So, and of course, they busted my chops many times over my lack of information on that. Selected participant on BFD's first special operations team. State of Florida's Distinguished Service Award for Wildland Fire Deployment, 1998. BFD Fire Officer of the Year in 2006. Manti County Fire Chiefs Association Citation Award in 2014. He's a team leader on multiple hurricane deployments, more than I would want to list, so you can imagine the devastation he's seen. Manti County EMS Phoenix Award for bringing a life into this world. Firefighter Olympics medalist in cycling and ice hockey, and that's really what we know Ernie for, is his great abilities when it comes to being an athlete. He is known all over the world for his cycling. And, you know, he's ranked accordingly. So he enjoys cycling, free diving, any type of sports that he can participate in. So he does a lot and has been a leader for us. So, Ernie, I could keep going all day, but please don't. I, I'll gather all your badges and ribbons for your, for your party that's coming up, but I just wanted to recognize you for your 30 years of service and give you a round of applause. So not only is Ernie a great person, but he's a man of few words. So I appreciate if we could just.
Thank you for the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Such a humble guy, but he's done so much. So I'd ask you to just take a quick photo with us and, and we'll.
We can get everybody down here in front and we'll stand up in back is probably the easiest way with the numbers.
Chief, come back.
Is that what it was? Yeah. It's a great transition. I know it is.
I know. I'm so totally used to it.
One more, one more.
I could see Doug. I couldn't see her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. At this time, we'll move forward to citizen comments. Citizen comments will be accepted at this time on non-agenda items. The comments for the agenda items will be accepted at the appropriate time. As you know, you have three minutes. And when you come forward, please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes. And as we've talked, you know, this is a business meeting, so, you know, any outcry of the audience at any times for or against anything is not appropriate at this time. First on the agenda we have, or first on the consent citizen comment is Sharon Jefferson. Please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Good morning.
Morning.
I didn't come prepared to make a comment, but so since I'm here, I just wanted to take the opportunity to share with you all something that I think that this body needs to consider as we're continues looking at the growth and the development and the care of an area in Ward Five. And so I'm sorry, I'm Sharon Jefferson, 71346 Street East, Bradenton, Florida, Ward Four. And so what I wanted you all to consider was the use of the old Bradenton, I think it's some type of a police substation, is near the Lincoln Village area. And so I know that affordable housing is an issue, and we want to make sure that we get people in housing, but what I wanted you all to consider is that there needs to be something in a community that allows people to be resourced, to thrive. And so you can put a whole bunch of people in neighborhoods and crand them into neighborhoods, but if there is nothing there that is going to meet some of the underlying needs of a community, it's going to be more of a survival type thing. And we want communities to be able to thrive and not only just to survive. And so that's all I wanted to tell you all, that when, if it ever comes up on your agenda, there's something that I'll definitely continue to advocate for, education, any type of things that will support the culture of that community. I think it's after school tutoring, something for that building that is still there. So I would not have, you know, support another house, although I know people need a place to live. As I said before, there needs to be something in the community that will eliminate the blight, which is I know that is all of our purpose. And the only way, in my opinion, that we're able to do that is to be able to uplift that community with culture and with education and resources. So that's, that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Next, we have Bill Sanders. Please come forward. State your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning. Bill Sanders, 2502 Riverside Drive East. I'll continue where I left off in the last three minutes here, whereby I was not allowed to address the $2.8 million increase in the Riverwalk project. Mayor, I think you misunderstood my point. Didn't get it. On 6/12/19, you were not here for that discussion. On 7/15/20, you were not here. 11/18/20, you were not here. So on 7/15/20, motion was made by Jean Gallo, second by Pat Roth. The vote was two to two. Jean Gallo and Pat Roth was for it. Bill Sanders, Harold Berg, voted no. Mayor Poston had to break the tie because Mrs. Barnby was not allowed to vote due to a conflict. The minutes are here, if you'd like to see them. So then we had to agree again that NDC was awarded the contract and then the Swift was second in line in case NDC couldn't perform. On the project, Phase One was to be completed by 12/31/21. It was not. The city of Bradenton had other expensive projects that never went over budget. Fire Station, Streetscape downtown, Plaza Gates Todd Park, Plaza Gates Park, all by other contractors that were on budget. I spoke to Bradenton Herald representative because I was so concerned. I was hoping he would investigate. And he's here today. Perhaps he remembers this. Perhaps he doesn't, but here's the text message that I was concerned about this going over budget. I was concerned about going over $500,000, not $3 million. So Ryan says 7.5 million is the number I got from Public Works and Public Information Officer. That's on 8/4/2022. Is that on? It's on. So I've always been accused, Mr. Brown, of I don't have the facts, but I've never been allowed to show the facts because I get cut off or don't, I'm not allowed to speak. But I have the facts on everything I say. May get them out of order, whatever, but these are the facts. We did not intend to go $3 million over on that Riverwalk project.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. We'll move forward. Next on the agenda is.
I would like to say for Black, if you would allow three, just 30 seconds.
Your three minutes is up.
I'd like to recognize Tim Polk, the only Black man as a, as a planning director that wasn't recognized in today, and he should have, well.
Will be recognized when the timing is right. Please, Mr. Sanders.
This month is almost over, and no one attended his funeral.
Mr. Jones, please come forward. You have three minutes and state your name and address for the record.
Rodney Jones, 213 16th Avenue West. Jean, you can avoid a lot of problems if you just let the citizenry talk. It'll help, you know, get these things out. We had a recent meeting that Pam Coachman was in attendance out at 13th Avenue. And for public comment about the, the city hall, Silver City Hall, they told us we only get one to two minutes for public comment. We get three here. So we have a community meeting where we're supposed to get more time to talk and we get less. It's not helping you any, man. It shows a lack of leadership. It shows a lack of concern about your citizenry, and it's just really poor conduct. Now, I've been up here, as this gentleman here said, for years, saying the same thing. Now, we've got everybody here today. It's Black History Month. You've got Josh Kramer here, who's the center of the corruption. I can't see if he's over here. You know exactly where, well, I can't see. Yeah. And Josh is here. Chief Bevan is here. We've got two contradictory documents. One shows that the cops were at my house harassing me. The other one says that it doesn't. Can Mr. Kramer explain that? You're here.
Citizen comment, please.
Can you explain it? I mean, everybody else speaks up and chimes in. Can you explain why there are two complimentary documents and you can't explain either? Because somebody was lying, Jean. So what I want to do, if I'm permitted, I want to meet with HR Director. I don't see why I would not be allowed to meet with her to present the information to her. And then after that, we're off to DOJ. What I've tried to do was just come as many times as I possibly can when my time permits to get this on the record. My effort as a citizen to actually resolve this issue and come to you and come to you again. I've got over 700 emails as well to the city of Bradenton involving a lot of issues, and you just haven't responded, and you're going to have a hard time responding to the DOJ. Now for you, I had a problem with your behavior at the last meeting. You're very disrespectful. I bought a former federal agent in here that confirmed what I said, and you basically have called everybody that comes in here a liar. Betty Lou Rhodes says that you guys aren't doing investigations on the Black community. I'm saying you're not doing investigations on the Black community. Everybody's saying that you're not doing investigations on the Black community. We don't have case numbers. Betty Lou Rhodes met with you last April with Giddens, Chief Bevan, and David Levin, myself and Alfonso Houston, to get a complaint done. You know, to this date, she still doesn't have a case number of findings from almost a year ago. I, I made a complaint that Sergeant Cruz, less than a month ago, came out and impersonated herself as a supervisor of investigations. I haven't received a case number of finding. You don't do investigations on the Black community. And could someone please explain at your comment section, like what's going on and why you're not doing the complaints on the Black community? Why Bill Ackles is saying that there's no case numbers and there's no, he's your record flirt. He's saying that this stuff doesn't exist. You guys are lying. And you, you told a big lie. You're, you're a number two deputy police guy. I researched you all weekend, and you've been in more trouble than a little bit. I don't even understand how you got.
Mr. Jones. Next is Kimla Morell. Good morning. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I am Kimla Morell, 521 12th Avenue West in Bradenton. First, I would like to say I came with a complaint about 11th Avenue West and 7th Street. It was overgrown. It was unkept. And it was a very hazardous view blocker. I want to say thank you for cleaning that up. I went by there. It's all clean. It's wonderful. Thank you very much. So you're hearing us and you're moving on it. So we appreciate it. I want to bring 12th Avenue to your attention. As you know, it's been constant activity, drug activity, illegal activity. We do need to get, it's been an increase in the loitering, increase in the drug activity, so we need more policing there. It's getting worse. The citizens can hardly come out of their homes. It's really bad, guys. It clears up and then it gets back. We need solutions where it's, it's not happening. We want to be able to make sure that our kids are safe. We're going to do a community walk this Saturday. Community unity, just so we can let the community know that, listen, we want to clean this area up. We want to make this community better. We want to make our neighborhood safe. Thank you, city, the city of Bradenton for supporting us, and we want that continued support. We would love to see your faces at some of these meetings that we're having so that the, the community, the citizens know, yes, that you back us. So, thank you. I want to say to Mr. Perry, you stepped up when he asked for the computers. We haven't received them yet, but you have been making, they've contacted me with calls and everything, so I just want to make sure we don't drop the ball on that. Let me know what's going on because we could use computers for Exodus Community Resource Center. That's where we encourage, educate, and empower our youth in the community. We're giving them education, creative arts. We're putting into our youth. Okay, our youth is the future. Also, we are Black History. We are. We stand on the backs of our ancestors, but we are Black History. So when you support us, you're supporting our community. This is the history as it is going along. So we need your support. Okay, we'll never forget where we come from. We won't, we have that in our hearts, and we won't let our youth, or we won't forget where we are going. Thank you for your support, and let's see what else I have. Got the community walk. That's it. Thank you all. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, we have Gary. Is it Laco? Lakeo? Please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Gary Lakeo, 1230 50th Street East, Bradenton, Florida.
Thank you. Yes.
Now I'm going to start my timer. Good morning.
Good morning.
Today I'd like to talk to you about the things that I love. Palmasola Bay, our beaches, the Gulf of Mexico. I enjoy water sports, relaxing on the beach, swimming in the Gulf. And the biggest obstacle for me to doing those activities is red tide. I'm very sensitive to it. If I can smell it, it's damaging my lungs and everyone else's. And the biggest source that I see locally to supply nutrients for red tide are the commercial horse ride companies operating out of the Palmasola Causeway. How do they do that? Well, the obvious is, if you've been there, as the horses walk along the beach, they defecate. Some of the companies pick it up, some don't. It sits there. It dries out. The high tide drags it back into the bay. But that is, in my estimation, 10% of the fecal waste that those horses produce.
Stand closer to the microphone. Thank you.
That is 10% of the fecal waste that those horses produce while they're there. The rest goes directly in the water when they're walking along the causeway in water up to their tails or out to the northeast corners, again, in water up to their tails. How do I know that? Because I've been standing in water waist deep when they go by, just admiring them. Horses are beautiful. And the next thing I knew, I was surrounded by horse fecal waste balls. When I'm out on the bay and there's a northeast wind, and they've got those horses, and they're holding them in that northeast corner for 20 or 30 minutes, I see fresh horse fecal waste balls being pushed across the bay. And that's probably 1% because most of them are sinking very rapidly. That fecal waste is high in nitrogen, which drives the brown algae blooms in the summer. It's high in phosphorus, which leaves, doesn't bind well to soil, so it trails all the way out to the Gulf of Mexico where it feeds the blooms that have been out there for months. And now it's, the red tide blooms are chasing that trail up into Palmasola Bay, and this is from Monday. So it says it's medium. Medium is too high for me to be anywhere near. Medium is too high for me to be anywhere near it. I understand the history of the causeway and Florida Department of Transportation's ownership of it, and you all do too. But they supported Pinellas County's countywide ban on horses going onto beaches and into the waterways. They support Manatee County's ban on horses going into, onto beaches and in waterways at the Palmasola Causeway Park, right at the west end of that causeway. And so I'm asking you to do what's right for the environment, for the residents, for the tourists, for all the commercial businesses that depend on clean, healthy water.
Next, we have on the agenda for the citizen comment is Kurt Landefeld. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Kurt Landefeld, three nine nine three Lakewood Avenue, Bradenton. Um, I just wanted to thank the mayor, council, Minister Perry and staff for all of the community meetings that have been held so far discussing the future of the city hall property. I know it takes a lot of effort on your part to organize these things, but, uh, it has been a necessary part of the process that we have to go through, uh, as we try to figure out the best solution for the resolution of this property and, uh, its future development. I have attended all of those meetings and, um, I have heard a number of good comments from the people who have attended. Many have addressed the issues that you're familiar with, uh, regarding traffic congestion, uh, water quality, uh, infrastructure needs and all. And those are legitimate concerns, and I hope and I know that, um, this administration is dealing with all of those. But I hope is at the same time that they're hearing what the opportunity is being presented to the city in terms of how we want the future of this community to unfold. Mayor Poston and past councils, um, polled the citizens and found repeatedly that we want to have a revitalized downtown, uh, with more people living downtown, able to support the businesses downtown. And as a result, that we will have, um, a urban core that is, uh, a place to visit as well as to live. And so my hope is that, uh, we not lose, uh, focus on the moment that is before us. That, uh, the opportunity that we have, um, to think about the future of this property and how we can preserve for a generation, um, the future prosperity of the city and to let that prosperity flow out to all of the communities that will benefit from the decision that we make here. So I know you're gonna do that. Um, I've appreciated the process. I'm looking forward to its conclusion. And I know that as you think through and make the best decision for this city, that, uh, we're gonna have a good resolution of it. I'd like to make one final editorial comment. When I ran for city council last year, I promised that I would, uh, restore civility and effective representation, uh, to Ward Four. And even though I did not get elected, that objective has been met. And, uh, the citizens of this city ought to be thankful for that. And that, uh, this council is the best council that I have seen during my time in Bradenton. And I look forward to, uh, working with you all as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Tawana Johnson. Please come forward. State your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, Tawana Johnson, forty three fifteen Second Avenue East. Um, I'm coming before you, we open up very well, justice for all. I'm coming on behalf of Crystal Ware, who has put in a complaint several times for an, a land theft investigation that was on her father, who had, who was actually murdered for property. And there has been a refusal to actually give her a case and, and provide a investigation. And the second issue I'm coming on before the board is the sale of the property. I would like to know what the plans are for the city of Bradenton and their plans of what they're planning to relocate if they're gonna sell the property. Has, has that been considered and what amount would that impose on the citizens for us to purchasing of the new area of what the city of Bradenton would be? Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the citizen comments we have, so, um, at this time, does any council have any comments? Because this is how the process works, when citizens all speak and then you can answer to any comments. Yes, councilman.
One thing I wanted to say is, um, the, about Mr. Tim Polk, I was gonna do that during my council report, but, um, he was, I worked with him for a long time and quite closely, uh, on the DDA board and had nothing but the highest of regard and still continued even after he was no longer with the city. And once I got on council, he was, he was there for me quite a bit. And, and it was, it's a huge loss and, um, I, I was disappointed. I was not in town for the day of his funeral. I didn't find out about it until I was already out of town and couldn't make it. But, um, he was a, he was a great man and, and I had a lot of fun working with him through the years. So I, my, my deepest condolences to his family. He was, he always talked about his, his kids and, and he brought so much, um, information because he had been in so many other areas and redevelopment. He was just a wealth of knowledge. So he, he is a big loss. So.
I, I'd like to piggyback on that. Uh, he, Mr. Polk was black history. He, he, he has, he had a history of using his expertise and his talents across this country. And we were very fortunate to have him here in little old Bradenton. And he did a lot to make little old Bradenton become a lot more Bradenton. And, uh, he was definitely instrumental when I was running for election. He would call and talk to me about things and I treasure now those hours and those minutes of having the opportunity to talk to him and pick his brain, because he was a wealth of knowledge, a wealth of heart, and, um, he's deeply missed.
All right, um, yeah, when I got on the council in two thousand thirteen, I think about a month into it, Mr. Polk comes to me and says, we're going down to Sarasota Airport, uh, building to talk about some things with the city. And I'm like, well, Mr. Polk, I'm still learning. He said, I'll get you. And we went down there and we gave about an hour presentation about the city of Bradenton and kind of what was going on at that time in the planning department. And, uh, it really helped me and the confidence he showed in me as a new person to really say, hey, you can do this. And, and just that, that, uh, that, you know, courage to bring me with him. So, um, and I, when his wife had called, I had told her that, uh, that story. And she said, well, that sounded like Tim and, uh, trying to always help people. And, um, fortune, unfortunately, we did tell her, she told me when the funeral was being planned and that we would be out of town. But, um, there is another opportunity, so I, um, am gonna make every effort for the burial at the National Cemetery. And she, she was very happy with that. Also, Tim and I talked numerous times. Um, sometimes almost weekly, we met in my office after he had retired from the city. And also, uh, with the chamber, he was on the chamber board. So, you know, those things were, were there. And, uh, for someone to insinuate that we weren't gonna honor Mr. Polk is, is very insulting to this board. And again, continues the, the propaganda that's out there. So, um, I just wish that people would honor and, and let the things go the way they're gonna go, not, not try to make something up or falsehoods. Um, couple other things that, that, you know, I'd like to probably talk about a little bit that things are in the works. Um, Palmasola Bay, you know, and the things that are happening there, they are not, not being addressed. They're talked about a lot in the office. We're trying to figure out through things legally and what can be done and what should be done and what can help. Um, we did have David Tomasco, the Sarasota Bay Estuary, uh, director, come and talk to us about some of the different red tide things and some of what's happening. So there's some history on that there, you know, with what's going on. But if somebody is breaking the law, we are going to address it. So that's something that we'll be looking into more of. And, um, the, I was hoping you would come today, because I know, um, Mr. Laco, you had sent several emails and, and they were being addressed. We actually have a meeting, have a meeting with our attorney administrator after this meeting to talk about some things. So we're looking into things. Some of the other things, as, as time comes out and some of the things that have been said about not doing things that, you know, once the opportunity with investigations is finished and will come out, our chief will address those. But it's not an appropriate time to do that yet. So, you know, we will keep working. Um, I know one of the things that, that we've talked about in, in some of the use of different areas for police and, and some community areas, it's something that we are working diligently, slowly but diligently on, trying to come up with some community centers in different areas of, of Ward Five to say, what can we do to make things better? And probably, and as we know, when COVID hit, um, our Title One schools had the biggest drops because they didn't have the resources that other areas have. So, um, you know, we are collaborating with other groups that try, are trying to come together because not one group in itself can afford to do it. Um, but hopefully, that's something as we see in an area that we're going to revitalize and keep working, you know? Um, to try to say, okay, can we collaborate with seven different entities? Because those seven entities, uh, uh, you know, the Boys and Girls Club needs it from three to seven. The Health Department could use it in the mornings to help people. The media centers, the county can help with media centers and put in the areas that, you know, the, the children that need it the most to help. So those things aren't not talked about every day in my administration, but government is frustrating. I said this at Willie Cooper's retirement the other day, person that's been a great person in this community. The Boys Club for forty years is retiring. Um, it is something that I work every day to work with this council in there to find out what we can do. You know, if we had that magic wand of seven million dollars, we could build a, a building somewhere and do it. We don't. We're trying to figure out the collaboration, but I think there's momentum going forward now for that. So you got my promise, and I said it at, that, that, the other day. It's, it's slower than I like, but we're working it. So, um, those things are going. But, um, I, anything else from anyone or?
I just want to echo, uh, that's one of the things, and I've said it a few times as well, government moves so slowly. But actually, this council and the mayor and staff are looking at those issues and trying our best to collectively solve that. So don't think you're not being heard. Don't think I don't see it, because I'm not far from there myself.
All right. Thank you. Now, moving forward. Not, we just will move forward and we will be in contact, so, um, yes. Mr. Kramer?
Uh, just one thing I want to discuss, uh, Dr. Jefferson, that home you're speaking of, the former substation, uh, is actually on the CRA agenda tomorrow. I'm sorry. Is on the CRA agenda tomorrow to potentially post for sale. I'm gonna ask that that property be removed until we can talk more about, uh, what we can possibly do with it. I didn't want to cross CRA business, but I checked with Mr. Rude, so. Uh, also, I, I think we'll talk about community meetings. I'll talk about that later on.
Okay. All right, you and the councilors. All right, Madam Clerk?
And Mayor, Mayor Brown?
Oh, yes, sir.
Just, just briefly, for edification, for purposes of the council, complaints against police officers involving misconduct go to the police department generally, not HR. Uh, that would be for more general services to employees. They have their own procedures and policies and, and that's, that, that, okay, may I speak?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Jones.
Uh, they, they have their procedures and protocols that, that are designed to basically, um, process through complaints of sort of any, sort of, uh, police impropriety, misconduct, the like.
All right, yeah, if you just want to go to the police department, that's the- Miss Madam Clerk, we're gonna move forward with the consent agenda. And at, at this time, I'm going to call Bill Sanders on the consent agenda. Mr. Sanders?
Mayor, the agenda has a specific provision on it. If there's a request for an ADA compliance, um, that can be complied with basically, um, by the request being proffered, um, to the clerk's office if we have to take any special arrangements. Thank you, though.
Can we remove things from consent or are you taking comments first?
Let's hit the comments and then-
Okay.
Bill Sanders, twenty five oh two Riverside Drive East. On the consent agenda, I don't know which item it is, I don't, I didn't bring the consent agenda up here, but there was a budget adjustments, I believe, February twenty second. And there's a million seven on the Riverwalk, which I spoke of earlier. I don't recall ever discussing this in our budget meetings in September. Not one time did I hear that we was gonna have a two point eight million dollar increase in our budget. So now in the next year, you're taking half cent sales tax. That's money that should go into coffers for, you say you don't have seven million, you got more than seven million. You got fifty eight million dollars in the bank and you can't build a community building that the public wants. So don't, don't tell me you can't take and, and prioritize those things. It's because you don't want to. Because you just give them three million dollars more on a Riverwalk that wasn't intended. That bothers me. That's, that's, how can I trust this board and mayor to not go over budget on the city, uh, sell city hall and rebuilding it? If you go over by forty percent on sand and dirt, you're gonna build a new police department station and you're gonna build a new city hall? And you're telling us it's only this amount of money and I'm supposed to trust you? That you can't keep a park on budget? And you certainly can't keep it on time. It was supposed to have been completed a year and a half ago. I want you to answer to the public. I'm now the public. If I was up there, I'd be beating my chest, just like I did before, which nobody liked it. I understand. I understand you don't like it. I don't like it either. I don't like to have to behave that way to get attention. But sometimes it's the only way to get attention is to call out the wrongs that you're doing. You've got plenty of money. Last, last meeting, you, you, you proved fifty million dollars for, um, a loan to take care of infrastructure. You know why you did it? I don't like lawsuits. They're bad. They're terrible. But this lawsuit was one of the best lawsuits that's ever came on the city. It forced us to fix our infrastructure. Don't everybody up here take credit for taking infrastructure. The Water Keepers lawsuit forced us to do what we should have done years and years ago. So I, 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 it really kind of bothers me when you take credit for, uh, uh, a fifty four million dollar loan that the taxpayers go ahead to pay back out of the enterprise fund. So if we've got three or four million dollars out of the enterprise fund, why can't we use it for something else? Because it's not a priority.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have some things to say.
I think the record needs to be perfected, uh, so that we can refute some of these, these, uh, mischaracterizations and let the public understand the totality, accuracy and factual nature of, uh, what, what this issue is about.
If Mr. McCollum is gonna speak to that, do we want to just pull the adjustment and then let him speak to it?
That, I, I'd agree. Um, Councilwoman, uh, Moore and I spoke yesterday and, and that's probably good.
Okay, so you have a motion to approve the consent agenda, pulling what items?
H and I.
I'd like to remove E.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Nope. Yep, that was G and H.
Okay, so we'll need a motion to remove G and H.
I'd like to remove E.
And would the motioner accept removing E? So we have one motion, E.
So I'll make a motion that we approve via consent agenda, items A, B, C, D, F and I. Second.
And for purposes of discussion, just edification, um, I did have the opportunity to sit with each and every counselor yesterday. Um, and if, if not sit with them, there was one, a lengthy telephone conversation regarding all these consent items. So I would hate to see somebody come in and say that counsel just goes ahead and willy nilly approves this consent agenda. Each and every item was discussed, with the exception of perhaps the minutes, uh, that I don't think anybody had a particular issue with, um, at one point or another. And I appreciate the council taking the better part of the entire day of the administration, my sitting with them throughout the day. And some people took an hour and some people took forty five minutes, that type of thing. So great work. Thank you.
We have a motion by Ms. Coker, second, I believe I heard, Ms. Coachman.
Yes.
Yes. To approve A, B, C, D, F and I. To approve A, B, C, D, F, and I on the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion before we?
Yeah, I'd also just like to clarify because I don't like the way it was left out there, um, as far as the Water Keepers lawsuit. And I
Let's do that and we can, we want, we'll talk about the other.
Okay. I just think I want I'm talking about the comments that were made.
You have a set, you have a chance to do that.
Do after? Okay.
All right, so we have a motion and we'll start the vote in Ward three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
It's approved five to zero. Ms. Coker?
Oh, you want me to, now I can comment? Um, I I I just think that it's very disingenuous to come up there and act like the only reason we're doing this for the, um, infrastructure is from the lawsuit. In fact, I believe it was even noted during the during the litigation how we were already had in the works and budgeted to do all the work that they wanted. So it's I I think that it's, I I don't understand why someone wants to mislead everyone. We are doing the best we can and a lot of what is being addressed with the lawsuit.
Um, we have no, um, audience participation at this time. You know, to make comments out there is inappropriate. It's inappropriate. Um, and if you if there's one more, if there's one more outburst, you will be asked to leave. Ms. Coker?
Yeah, I I just I just want the public to know that, um, things are being misrepresented.
Okay, um, so Ms. Coker, you had an agenda item that?
Yeah, okay, item number E. Um, I I is anyone here to talk about the summer market? I I, uh, if I'm understanding it correctly, it's, I'm really hoping, I I I'm so glad that we're going to do it during the summer. Um, I was hoping that we could do it every week. I I feel like we've gotten such momentum going. Sure, come on up. Um, we've got so much momentum going and from what I'm hearing, your successes are just off the charts. And I hate to lose that momentum. And if it's not every week, then those vendors will go might go somewhere else and we may lose that.
Yes, so we actually Andrea Kenees with Realize Bradenton. We actually polled our, um, vendors to see what they wanted because we're looking at this as a pilot program. And what they didn't want is to go full force and not get, we do have people who leave during the summer, and not get the, um, same amount and then be there all summer. So this was actually something we did in connection with our vendors to make sure it was something they wanted. It's a pilot. If this goes well, the hope would be to do it all summer next year.
Um, again, I just, I think that, and I see this in real estate. We have become less and less of a seasonal. And I just think when you have that momentum, that you guys are doing a great job. I'd almost rather see you go every week and then if not, then maybe back it off.
Well, we've got it. We have to have vendors that are willing to do it every week. So without the vendor piece, you know, chicken and the egg. So that's our, our hope is that it will be wildly successful.
Well, I I think it will be. I just hate to see you lose any of the momentum that you've built. Because people start going, well, which weekend is it? Is it this weekend or not? And so I I that's that's just my concern. I mean, I'm in favor of it and not, you know, but I just wanted to have that discussion.
In connection with our vendors, they are, without them, we won't have a market, so we have to put them first.
We'll explore the, we'll explore our
Okay.
So we're willing to explore that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, good.
Thank you.
All right, are you going to make a motion to approve it?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve item E of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on item E. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Okay, that's approved. Mrs. Moore?
Um, I did meet with Mr. Perry yesterday to review the, uh, consent agenda items. And I had a couple of questions. Timing with another community meeting did not, um, really allow for me to meet with, um, Mr. McCollum or Mr. Williams. However, Mr. Williams did respond to me via email. But I think it's worth noting, um, that this one-point-seven million, uh, budget adjustment is not different than the two-point-eight million change order to continue the expansion. And I I would let Mr. McCollum speak to that. Also just note, a staff member pointed out that there was, um, I think typos in that budget adjustment form supporting documentation. Um, so maybe if we move to approve it, we might just want to say noting the
Windows errors.
Okay. Right.
I apologize for that. Uh, Jim McClellan, Director of Public Works and Utilities. Um, as it relates to the the budget adjustment, what this is effectively doing is moving money from one account in the city into the project account for this to cover the cost associated with the final phase of the Riverwalk. So basically, what this is doing is establishing the two-point-eight million dollar budget that is available to be charged against for the construction cost. It is not different from it. The approval of a change order is simply saying you approve for the project cost to be that. This is the budget adjustment that backs that up. Okay.
Mayor, if I could just have Mr. McClellan elaborate a little, elaborate a little bit more on projected cost, budget cost, and final cost for this particular component. And and I think it's also important to note that the budgeting and the, uh, the the process of of both construction, planning, and the like has been sequential. We had two A, two B, two C, two D. And so we've been doing them in piecework. Um, each one is a separate kind of bit, piece of the overall project. And it's important for folks to understand that. When they hear a cost of seven or nine million, you know, seven or eight million dollars projected uh, as an early budgeted cost for the overall expansion, that that includes multiple components that I just described. So if you could just elaborate a little bit for our edification and perhaps for the education of the misunderstood folks that have commented on it.
So essentially, the way in which the Riverwalk project has been completed is in four separate phases. Originally, Phase Two A, which is Mineral Springs and Riverwalk East at Mineral Springs. That component of the project, Two A, had a an original budget, I I believe around four-point-two million, which was approved by council as a guaranteed maximum price for that phase of the project. Subsequent to that, Phases Two, Two B, and Two C, which are currently nearing completion, uh, they had an additional, uh, cost that brought the guaranteed maximum price for the three phases to about seven-point-two million dollars. And then the last thing we were doing is Phase Two D, which is the phase that was currently under construction as well, which will connect the eastern portions with the western portions of the Riverwalk. All of that being done as individual components to a guaranteed maximum price. So the guaranteed maximum price that the project started with was for only one phase. It was then subsequently changed with council approval to the seven-point-two for the three phases with the fourth phase remaining to be finalized. And that final phase is the one that recently came before council for approval. And this budget adjustment is associated with that as well.
And I'd just point out that the final phase also had alternatives. The city, when I came in, was hopeful about getting a connection that would not have to bring, um, pedestrian traffic along the Riverwalk out to Manatee Ave. And so it was kind of a moving target as far as whether we would be able to do that, whether there would be acquisition costs related to property, um, and and other issues surrounding that particular alternative. As time went on, it, uh, became apparent to to public work staff that it would have to go out to Manatee, that the acquisition was a difficult and challenging and costly undertaking at this point in time. And so that's what was submitted. Um, I think that shows pretty good planning, pretty good fiscal frugality by trying to do it as cheaply as possible, but realizing that sometimes in construction projects is uncertainty. Uh, it's a beautiful project, obviously, and I think it was handled. I don't see any significant cost overruns. And I think the mischaracterization to say that there was is a a fairly flagrant, uh, uh, I'll leave it at that. I guess fairly flagrant mischaracterization.
Please, you're out of order, sir. You're out of order. Uh, Ms. Moore, did you have?
I I will just also note that my understanding of, um, our approval of the two-point-eight million, um, and then to do the final phase and this budget adjustment, there will be a future or maybe more than one future budget adjustments because you're going to continue to have to do the same thing until you, is that accurate?
There would likely only be one final budget adjustment because what we tried to do with this budget adjustment is say, how much money is going to get spent by the end of this fiscal year? So by the end of, uh, September. With any luck, everything is completed by then and we don't need to come back for that. But here we are.
So we've proved up to two-point.
Yep. So, all right, so.
Just clarifying. Thank you.
A motion to approve.
I I excuse me. Oh, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Which button buzz it, so, Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. McClellan, looking at, um, item H, where it talks about the removal and replacement of existing storm system on Review Boulevard. We're talking Riverview Boulevard West, correct?
That is correct.
So the project that we've been waiting for for several years is?
Coming to fruition.
I would respectfully request that we don't turn one shovel of dirt.
Which is why you haven't seen anything because the the structures that are required for the project are on order. And until they come, we've told the contractor, don't touch anything. Be ready to go.
We make sure that we have every piece of equipment that we need to to do that project.
I'm not worried about equipment. I'm worried about materials.
I said, okay.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, equipment might not, to you, equipment means like a machine. To me, equipment would mean catch basins and that sort of thing, supplies.
Correct.
Whatever you would need. Um, and it also, we're talking about the design cost for the water system improvements with Ironwood.
This is, uh, again, this is basically establishing the account within our system for us to be able to have our design consultants bill against, which is ultimately going to be reimbursed by Ironwood. There's already an escrow account established in the amount of the full amount of the design proposal from the engineers.
Right. I just wanted to get that on the record. Thank you.
Sure. And and just to comment to that, Ms. Barnaby, um, I was talking with some neighbors in the area. Obviously, lives close to there over all the years. And and they thought the project was canceled. And I said, no, it was not canceled there. It was waiting for the supply chain. So before any dirt was turned, it was going to be able to be a project that would be able to start and continue all the way through and be done. So so I think that might be something we want to try to get out again to the neighborhood that, no, it's not.
It's it was never canceled. It was on hold until we can make sure we had everything.
Right, so that and that was a very good, so, all right, um, any other questions, Mr. Kramer?
Uh, not really a question, more of a comment on the heels of all that. Um, the project delay for the Riverwalk expansion. Reasonable to say that it's materials, it's?
Um, it is greatly influenced by everything that happened as a result of COVID in the supply chain. For instance, we had one instance where the large stones that were placed in the bio-swell that runs through Mineral Springs Park. They were ordered. Um, purchase order was issued for them. Contractor placed the order with the supplier. The supplier said they'll be there on Tuesday, whatever day it was. And he had all of his crews lined up to install the stones. And the supplier called and said, sorry, I got somebody else paying more for them and we're sending them to Georgia. Um, it's that kind of thing that impacts this.
Common sense post-COVID.
Right, and and again, I'm I'm gonna, when you said stones, obviously, stones for the city of Bradenton means different in my professional world. But, um, traditionally, sixty to ninety days to put in a marker before COVID. Three markers were put in Monday, thirteen months.
Right.
And that's an emotional hardship on a family. So, you know, again, normally, two to three months was an average, and now we're at thirteen months. So it's not just affecting, uh, one industry, it's affecting all industries. And and so I hope people are patient because, you know, like we said, government's too slow. Now you add this to it and look where we're at, so, um. All right, so any other questions before we ask for a motion?
I move to adopt, uh, consent agenda or the budget adjustments G and H. With just noting that I think the supporting documentation inadvertently put numbers in the increase versus the decrease to make it balance.
So with scribbling errors corrected.
Right, yes.
All right, Mrs. Moore has a motion. Is there a second? Ms. Coachman, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Approved, five to zero. All right, Madam Clerk?
Next, we have Resolution twenty-three eighteen. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Bradenton, Florida, approving a State of Florida Department of Transportation Maintenance Agreement for landscape and irrigation improvements associated with the city's Riverwalk extension along State Road sixty-four westbound or Manatee Avenue East between Sixth Street East and Ninth Street East, authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement and to act as the city's authorized representative under the agreement, providing for repeal of resolutions in conflict, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date.
Mr. McClellan?
Yes, Jim McClellan, Director of Public Works and Utilities. Uh, this is associated with the components of the Riverwalk project in Phase Two D that are being installed along Manatee Avenue between Sixth Street East and Ninth Street East. In order to get the DOT permit for the installation, it's required that the council has a resolution that formally recognizes that it's going to enter into a maintenance agreement for these items. So basically, what's going in is some concrete sidewalk that's replacing some existing concrete sidewalk. We're also enhancing the landscaping along this area and installing irrigation system to provide for maintenance of those landscape components.
Okay, any questions?
I just ask, um, it, so they're going to maintain it after we put the landscape in? Okay, good.
That's what the, basically, when you do something in a DOT, right away, they make you sign off, just say, we're going to take care of it.
Okay, okay.
Anything further? No. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Barnaby, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote to approve Resolution twenty-three dash eighteen in Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Approved, five to zero. Thank you. Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number B under eight, Section Eight, is council direction on potential city hall sites. Um, council, I'm sure remembers that last week we had a workshop regarding potential city hall sites. Uh, Mr. Williams gave a presentation on five potential sites. And, uh, at that time, we had asked for permission basically to proceed, um, with some diligence work um, by HR, uh, High Construction. Uh, it was requested that we wait to to have a little bit further discussion on that till this meeting. Um, and we're here to talk about that. I would ask for a a motion to approve that ultimately. But I think a larger discussion probably has to take place on the five sites that were presented to council.
Okay, questions start out? Ms. Moore, it looks like you have a question, comment?
It's not really a question as much as, um, I, just to kick things off. Um, what I'm, in my mind, what I'm weighing is, uh, location first generally. So we have two sites that are within what we would call our current downtown core and then three outlying sites. Um, so there's that issue of the economic versus the non-economic benefit of having municipal services located in our down, our current downtown core. And then I think the other considerations would be, um, the ownership, you know, the existing ownership, us versus city-owned versus CRA-owned versus private, you know, acquisition needs. Yep. I guess just to kick it off that way, those are, in my mind, those are the kind of the competing things that we might want to discuss and flesh out a little bit.
Well, I think you bring up a good point as far as, you know, city CRA, basically the same when we look at the overall part of it. It's 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 not on the tax rolls. But when you also look at, you know, an opportunity for a project that may cost several million dollars less, if it does, we got to do the due diligence. But if it costs less and then we can put others back on the tax roll, what is that balance? And I would want to know more of, you know, and I think Mr. Perry is working on some of that information that we might not have today. But but where? But where would it be, obviously, location, obviously, green space plays a factor into it that we've heard at our public meetings. So I think, you know, I I I think if there's one, maybe two, that just aren't sites that aren't even viable right now. Would it be something we might want to eliminate, so the staff isn't wasting time going through those parts of it? But, and maybe, you know, the biggest part of the, what we talked about at the end of the meeting on Thursday or the end of the workshop was. You know, one site that we'd have to purchase, we need to know if it's even purchasable. And without due diligence, we wouldn't know that, so, you know, I think that's probably the biggest direction today that I see. We need to go forward with, say, give them the opportunity to say, is it a viable site or not? And then we can go from there, so, um, and then, because, you know, there's some others that we have to purchase property too. And there's, you know, two that we don't, well, actually, one we are, but that's, that's probably on processes already gone down the road if it would happen, so. But, any other comments? Ms. Coker?
Well, I guess, um, I I think it would be more efficient to kind of maybe go ahead and narrow down what we're looking at. Because I think, in my opinion, um, I I don't know how specific you want me to be, but some of them just. I don't see them being really options, uh, I'm down to two really, to be honest with you, uh, maybe three. But um, I think that um.
So one specifically that's number, that would be number five and eliminate?
Yeah, uh, yeah, um, I think the. The thirteen sixteen Fourth Avenue West, I don't think that's, that's the David Wilcox parking lot, right? I just don't see that um viable, um, it's not big enough and I I that went to me. And um, and and I don't really care for the Ninth Street, I think that was a while ago designated as, um. I mean, that's just not part of our plan, for our plan that we've had for a little while, for what should go there, I I think we're kind of. Bearing off of that, so I I could get rid of Ninth Street as well, um. I think that there are le- legitimate concerns with the water tower and the leases that are concerned there. But I mean, maybe we need to look at that a little bit further, um, I think based on the meetings we've been having and the discussions about. Public green spaces downtown, make the Third Avenue, but I want to know, since it's an existing building, I want to know more about its condition. And that's why I want to see that, um, you know, investigation done. And then uh, Fourteenth Street, I've always um somewhat liked that because I think it will be part of the revitalization. That we wanted to have happen on uh, Tamiame Trail, and it's the gateway to our city. So those, to me, those two stand out um for me, and I'd like to see us be as efficient as possible. With um, with our due diligence, so.
If I, if I, I'll just do the same thing, which is, um, I personally believe there is a benefit to having municipal services. Um, in the downtown area, um, it's non-quantifiable, in my opinion, but it is, you know, just with the art and the. You know, and. Part of a vibrant downtown, I think, has municipal services included somewhere, um. That said, I agree with you, we would have to do some due diligence, I'm not adverse to that. Uh, my understanding about the Wilcox option that also is within the same kind of downtown current core is that the acquisition because of the multiple. Owners might make that unduly burdensome. Um, so I can appreciate that that maybe is not the strongest, if there's two within the area and one might seem easier. The, but I don't know that we necessarily, that the cell towers are. He, I I don't think that we would be talking about relocating that, but maybe just kind of making it incorporated somehow and whatever's going there. My only thought about that area is that if we're already building um something, that maybe there is some, not that they need to be combined. Cause I can appreciate that that, you know, did it already, didn't work, um. But that there could be some kind of benefit to constructing two things at the same time in relatively close proximity. So I don't necessarily think that the cell tower or the cell tower leases is a deal killer for that one. And I think it has that benefit of already construction being proposed there, um. Fourteenth Street, I would just say, uh. I, my thought is I hear people go both ways. It's ridiculous to think to a city, a municipal services building would add economic benefit, and then on the other side, it absolutely will be this. You know, huge catalyst and. I don't really have anything to to properly weigh those two. I don't, I don't know the answer to that, I don't know if it will or won't, um. And then, the fifth one.
Ninth.
Ninth. Um. Which one was that one again?
It's right across from the ballpark.
Okay.
And we'd have two acquisitions there, we might.
Right, right, um, I think though, that also has pros and cons, I mean, removing the automotive services from that area is probably a. Uh, not a bad idea, I can totally appreciate though that this was supposed to be a, an entertainment district, so it might seem like an odd fit. Um, that also is something that I just throw out there, like, I don't know the whole answer, so would love to hear y'all's thoughts.
More comments?
I'll go. I agree with Councilman Coker's comments on the Fourth Avenue property, that was almost a non-starter when we heard it. Um, I'm personally not really in favor of the Ninth, I'm sorry, the Fourteenth Street location. I think the idea of possibly putting that back on the tax rolls, we've seen what's directly across street from us, the Met. Directly behind it is a neighborhood. Could that neighborhood use some help? Yes, but I don't think of City Hall right there is gonna be that answer. And I'm really not a huge fan of the idea of it on Sixth Avenue is, e- either. But that's just my thoughts.
Ms. Barnaby?
Well.
First off, do you have any additional questions? I'm sure you and Mr. Perry talked a little bit about meeting.
We've.
Glad you're feeling better.
I I'm feeling a little bit better and I I appreciate everybody's assistance during this. Crazy time of getting sick. Um. When I look at the five options that we have. I have to say that right off, right off the bat, the idea of trying to. Put enough land together on Fourth Avenue. I think is gonna be problematic, I think it's gonna, it's gonna take probably longer than we would want. And again, there's an, the expense to the taxpayer. When I look at. The. Ninth Street. Option. I'm, I'm really not, I'm kind of underwhelmed by that. Because we had talked about trying to make that an an entertainment zone and. I can't think of a bigger party pooper to put right in the middle of your entertainment zone than a big city hall government building. I just, I don't see that that would do what we have said we want to do over there. So I'm, I'm kind of don't necessarily want to go that way. Um. I'm not opposed to the Sixth Avenue and Third Street idea. I'm not opposed. I I have some reservations about the Third Avenue West site. And I'm not opposed to the Fourteenth Street site. We know that private money follows public money. We know that when this building was put here. Um, I think what it did was stabilize some of the businesses on Old Main Street. It, it. But the revitalization of Old Main Street that took place was because of individuals that bought properties and had a vision. And worked hard to make that happen. And we also have properties in town that are owned by individuals that. Are perfectly happy just to sit on them. It appears to me that it's almost demolition by neglect. And they're, they're thinking that if they hold out, they're gonna get this big payday at some point. And I think that has hampered our downtown. It's hampered the revitalization. When Cora Mae Stone gave the money to the Manatee Players. And the Manatee Players moved over to Third, the Third Avenue site where they are now, that freed up. Where Spring Hill Suites went. And working with the city, getting a parking garage, that made that a very viable option for redevelopment. But I don't see us redeveloping. Where the Bishop is, I mean, they, they have, they, they own that, they've put money into it. It's, it's a long-term lease, because I've seen the comments on Nextdoor about how. There, we're gonna take over the Bishop and we're gonna take over the pier, that's not gonna happen. That is just not going to happen. And to say that, that the city is selling downtown to a private developer and you're not gonna be allowed down here is false too. The rhetoric's getting a little ridiculous. So, again, private money follows public money. And I, I would be comfortable with eliminating the Fourth Avenue West. Considered sites for consideration, as well as the Ninth Street for consideration, and I'm happy to look at the other three.
Thank you, and and Ms. Barnaby, I want to add, not to, to uh, to say, a point you brought up was wrong, but. When we did the Spring Hill Suites, obviously, I was here through that hole on the, on the council. And we didn't promise them a parking garage, we promised them a hundred spots.
Right.
And that was in our flat land at that point. So, and we still don't promise them a park, parking garage, they're just promised a hundred spots somewhere. In the con- uh, vicinity of where the, where it is, so.
And I apologize for not being clear with that, but.
Again, some people twist things around and we don't want that to get twisted inadvertently because, you know, the parking garage came after. And I think that parking garage is the catalyst that will spring us forward as we keep going, and I totally agree. We've had a couple of individual developers, you know, in their own rights, that have been downtown. Doing things that really changed it, we have some others that, you know, if if we've, we've got other opportunity to maybe make. Strengthen our overlay zone and different things that we can do to maybe put a little pressure on them to clean up their buildings, or, like you say. Uh, tear down by neglect, so this council can act on some of that, and that's some of the things that. Um, that we are discussing as well, we've got multiple things that I think we're gonna go through and the opportunities are there. To say, okay, we're not being the bully, we're just being, hey, you've got opportunity, when you got weeds growing out of your building. Um, on the side of the building, they gotta be addressed, so I appreciate their comments and those are great comments.
And I, 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 there are two corollaries. One is, the only constant is change. There will be change in Bradenton, whether we direct it. Or we choose not to do something, or we, uh, change, change is going to happen. You can't have a thousand people a day moving into a county without change happening. And the only thing that likes change is a wet baby. So we've got.
Ms. Coachman?
Thank you, I'm not going to be redundant, I'm just gonna quickly tell you the two I want to eliminate. Ninth Street West, I think we should still continue to look at that as an entertainment district. We've already got a good start so far. Fourth Avenue West, acquisition, that's more money, and on top of that, quite a few owners to deal with. So those two gone. The other three. Being combined with PD on Sixth and Third. Not sure if I. Agree with combining again, um. But I would like to at least explore that area so that we can also find out if it's really viable for one of the other. Or the other. Uh, Fourteenth Street, I, I guess I've been for quite some time. Leaning more that way because of the idea of putting. A city hall or putting a building that's going to bring something to the area. In a positive way like it did here downtown, downtown was not so appealing. And then City Hall came and brought, you know, some change, so why not do that again somewhere else, but. I still think it's something to look at. Third Avenue West. Just a stone throw away, uh, in a way, it's kind of defeating the purpose of you, you, if you're saying you don't. Want to have something off the tax rolls so close to the water, and then you just go over a block, you know, it still seems to be a little. Prime property, but, but definitely is um, something to look at, because it's the only site that actually has a building. On it, uh, the others, you know, you start from the ground up, but this one could possibly be cheaper because you have the building. Or it may not, once we investigate it, so those three, I feel we should go for it.
And and I agree with you on the, the concept of until we know, what we don't know, we don't know till we know it, and the only way to find out is to do it. And and one of the things that, that again, going to the public meetings, and I know that'll probably be discussed in council comments, but just rough numbers. We've had, um, and and, you know, we've had people come and go and come into them, but we've had a hundred and ninety people come to our sixth meeting so far. And we've had twenty-nine frequent flyers, as I call them, that come to everyone, included in that hundred and ninety. And and we've heard green space and traffic the most, so I think if there's some opportunities. To do some of that, especially with this going, and I do not want to take off tax roll money or properties. But you have to look at the whole picture globally with what we're adding back on, taking off, so. Um, you know, and I agree with those three properties, you know, the Wilcox is when, when Mr. Perry and I sat down and really looked at a lot of options. We were trying to come up with stuff outside the box, just so we didn't have one option, you know, and and or two, so. You know, and again, you don't know what's gonna happen when you start doing some of the due diligence and and comes out of it, but. I think that those three properties we're talking about are good ones to really drill down, the first one we have to drill down on is the. The building that's there. And is it a money pit, or is it something that can be done, and then hold ourselves, our feet to the fire. Of, you know, how many people have bought a house and think, oh, I can redo this, and then boom, it's the money pit, so we gotta make sure that due diligence is there, so. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Moore.
Um, just to uh, comment on um, the Fourteenth Street one, uh. And I don't disagree with the due diligence, and I, like I said, I I like the idea, I think we could probably get creative with keeping municipal services somewhere in our core. Um, about Fourteenth Street, my understanding is that that that's the, it'll be facing what's, I think, the rear of the Met, um. Is that correct? Am I thinking of right? So the Met is trying to have its, its front.
Facing Fourteenth Street?
Uh, right, the rear of the Met is really faith, facing Fourteenth Street.
Right.
Um, and.
As I understand it, yes.
So. So this may or may not be relevant, but my question is, because of the proximity of the Met, literally across the street. Do we want to put a municipal building there, or would it be better if we considered services that? You know, we're, basically, my point is, sorry, I'm not articulating it well, is we're dropping a bunch of new residents in that area, and. Do we want to consider that dropping all those residents may bring things like a small grocery store, a dry cleaner? Um, you know, will it seem odd that we're putting municipal services right next to what is now going to be a, a heavier residential area? That's just my thought on how to revitalize that, and that, these are questions that I'm asking, I don't really know the answers to them, um. Yeah, and I think that, oh, and I was just gonna comment also on Sixth Street and the, and, you know, I know that that's where the police department's probably gonna go. It's, it's got a nice big space, though, is the thing, so. Again, I'm not thinking that we're gonna, you know, make the same mistake and put them together again, but maybe like a campus-y, you know, feel. Um, just because that area has the potential to be, I think if you took what was the Brown Field area. Uh, that would probably not, you know, obviously, you can't build residential on it, but I don't think that there's a prohibition on commercial or parking. I think it's over four and a half acres or something, or maybe even over five.
And there's some opportunity there to do a few different things too, and, but those logistics, water tower, brown. But those logistics, water tower, brown field.
Right, yes.
We have to keep going down that path, right? So, yes, ma'am.
I guess that would be a question.
I'm sorry, were you done, Ms. Moore? Were you done?
A question, and maybe Mr. McClellan, and maybe not at this meeting, but I was just curious as far as removing a water tower, is that going to affect water flow?
I'd address that, and Mr. McClellan, give you a deeper dive. Go ahead. We met with ACOM last week, and our architects gave us some insight. Go ahead.
Jim McClellan, Director of Public Utilities. Following the meeting last week with the architects for the police station design, I got in contact with our engineers. We have a hydraulic model of our water system. I've asked them, tell me what it's going to take to run the model, assuming the tower goes away, because there's two assumptions that we need to be, to verify. One is, certainly we can remove a water tower. The question is, do we need to replace it in order to not impact the fire flows and everything else in the downtown area? It's the smallest tank we have. It's also the oldest tank we have. But just the logistics of removing it, we're having it evaluated to tell us what that would be.
Due diligence is going through.
The other diligence we're doing is we have digital cellular carriers up top with leases on there, so we're looking at those leases. And it's not just the lease to put an antenna up there. They put generators down on the surface, pads, and make other investments. And so, if we did break the lease, we'll be responsible for covering some of that cost. So, we're kind of looking at the nature of the lease. We're going to begin to do that in our diligence. The revenue associated with it is about $73,000. Ms. Fortin has done an analysis that we've been able to complete.
A year or a month?
A year, annualized.
It's not a lot.
Yeah. And so, we're looking at totality. But if I could move on from the, I think I can integrate that in a small piece of the Sixth and Third location. So, you know, in my 35 years in government, this is probably one of the most interesting and dynamic issues I've seen regarding a public and private development project, because that's what it is. And you can say, well, municipal, City Hall's a municipal development project. We would be building that. Yep. But it's coupled. It's coupled with this issue regarding what do we do with the current police department and the administrative functions of city government itself, City Hall. And it seems to me that they've been joined, but we've been able to somewhat separate and decouple them. Today, we're talking about City Hall. It's awesome that we're having this conversation, because when we started the conversation, you've heard me repeat it a couple of times. I always felt that in order to complete this project, you know, whenever it's completed, three, four years from now, maybe longer, that the issue is that our elected leadership has to have the political will and wherewithal to do this and to address the public and provide them the opportunity to give some of their concerns. And at each and every meeting, virtually all the counselors are there. Sometimes one counselor might be missing because of a different commitment and the like. But as my staff gives the presentation, you're behind us, and you're answering questions too. Because it isn't about the staff. It's about the community. And the community is about the elected officials. That's the way we do things in the U.S. It's really a great kind of example in democracy. And between having the political will and wherewithal and the professional sophistication to do it properly, I think we are doing it in a very dynamic situation. When I said it was, you know, one of the most interesting projects, it's also one of the most dynamics. A lot of the projects I've done, it's like, okay, we have this new powder town we built, and we got to get developers to go in here. That really isn't what this project is about. This project is about historical areas and a whole host of other more challenging questions. And I'm going to get down to my point with this, but the discussion itself, the debate you're having, is very refreshing to me, and probably a lot of other folks have been working on this, and I hope to you as well, because it's a proactive discussion. It's a thoughtful discussion, and ultimately, it's a visionary discussion. If we don't want to change anything, we can go back to handling all the infrastructure underground we have with Ms. McClellan, his department, and a whole host of other city issues. But if you want to make for better tomorrow and look at opportunities to do that, that's what this discussion, I think, is somewhat about. As we move forward, great talks by you all on the various analysis of potential City Hall sites. When you look at that, what I've seen kind of develop in my conversations with you, as well as conversations with the community, as well as conversations with staff, is that you need information. You need information about the cost, because there has to be a fiscal analysis about can we afford this? What would it do? Is it a good financial decision? You need information about the timing of it. Okay, how would all this work? You've got two functions, a police department, major department within the city, the largest. And then you have, you know, the other catch-all general services, City Hall functions, and the like. Where does that best serve the community? And that issue is kind of both a public question, as well as an internal question from operational perspectives. Because, like we talked about, maybe bringing municipal, maybe bringing Public Works into the fold in the same building may be more operationally efficient. And so, in the future, there may be money savings associated with those types of things. Some people say, well, you know, you haven't planned it. We don't have enough information. There's always going to be a void of information. When I decided to go to law school, I had no idea where my career was going to go. That's same with Counselor Moore. We talked about it yesterday. You've got to take a chance when you walk through the door the first time. And that's what this council seems to be willing to do. In spite of, you know, the other side, which is just stay home in Massachusetts. That's all you need is Boston. It's the whole world. When I left Boston, you have to, you have to expand your horizons. You have to plan for the future. You have to provide opportunities for yourself and those around you that might be, you know, part of your circle, and here it's the community. On these three projects, moving down to close this out, I think what you've talked about makes a lot of sense, to the extent of it's giving options. And there's different values that people have when they buy something or make a decision. The values here, obviously, I talked about cost, talked about time, talked about public and internal benefits and the like. Each one of these sites has its own value. We talked about the Sixth and First site. We are trying to find out, is it big enough because of certain restraints to put both a City Hall and a police department on?
Mr. Perry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we had a kind of 10 o'clock thing that we.
Yeah, yeah. I'm going to wrap it up.
I don't know if we want to try to wrap this up in the next five minutes. If it's enough time. If not, we'll take a break and then come back.
We might want, you're the.
Go ahead and finish your thoughts, and then we'll see.
The Fourth Avenue property has an interesting concept, because usually ground-up construction would be blank slate, easier to do, sometimes cheaper. But we're dealing in this crazy supply chain issue regarding construction materials, both availability, as we talked about for the flood control project, as well as cost, concrete and the like. So, a lot of contractors I'm talking to are saying, well, we are revisiting whether renovation and remodeling is good. For this type of building, you're talking about a pretty stable shell, from what I understand. Concrete block has durability and the like, but probably more or less a gut job, and then attach new roofs, hurricane standards, all that stuff, the cost associated with it. And so, that's important. And ultimately, Fourteenth Street, its location, its redevelopment potential and the like, all that factor in, that's at your all's level. I think you're having a great, awesome debate about it. We don't have a dog in that fight at the administrative side, and I've tried to make sure we don't, and the like. So, moving forward, I'm going to be basically asking for permission to do further diligence. And shortly thereafter, probably on the order of 30 to 60 days, I think you'll have probably enough information readily available to make a policy decision. And so, today, sure. Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. And I think that kind of correlates with what everybody said. I mean, if I've heard it correctly, there's two sites that, you know, really don't meet the needs right now that we feel, Ninth and then Fourth Avenue. So, Ms. Barnaby?
I just wanted to remind everyone that the CRA did do an economic study on what could happen if the City Hall was moved to Fourteenth Street. And I believe Ms. Sirens has that and can make sure that everybody has a copy of it.
Yeah, I think that's important, but we didn't do sites on other things too.
Right.
Right. So, that's all the due diligence. I think the first thing we need to do is find out if the third site is even viable. And without that, you know, we don't know. So, yes, go ahead.
As part of the due diligence for the Third Avenue, to Ms. Coachman's point, I agree with you. That's the logical first question, I think, with that site. Why would we remove, you know, you're talking out of both sides of your mouth? So, in connection with due diligence, I would encourage Mr. Perry and staff to also be prepared to report on how that's going to economically also affect what we're.
We're already starting work on that question.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add on, for the public beating we're going to take for even considering this, I find it difficult to think that if we move a block, that we're going to be out of a potential flood zone. I need to see that information.
We'll get you that. We actually are not in a flood zone. And the elevation between our six and a half feet BFE, but base flood elevation, is probably, I think, about, I think it's seven feet higher there, but we'll get all that information for you.
I need that information.
Yes, ma'am.
That's been something we've been working on very diligently, as well as what you've talked about, a lot of stuff. But again, not until we have approval, because we know what the Sixth Avenue site is, because that's going forward. So, in the ACOM meeting last week, you know, they really need to know those before they can design a building in a position. So, I mean, Mr. Rudesell, do we need a motion to kind of maybe move forward with those three sites we talked about?
I think that would be appropriate, Mr. Mayor.
To do the due diligence.
Yes, sir.
With what we've talked about. So, is there a motion to move forward with the three sites? The Third Avenue site, the Fourteenth Street site, and the Sixth Avenue site?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. And any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
And one.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
And there's just one, we're going to need one other further motion regarding the diligence, solicitation for the diligence. If I could maybe suggest the language, and then obviously. What I would be asking for is permission to authorize the city administration to continue with HR high contractors that has previously been approved as continuing services contractor, for, among other things, to provide pre-construction services in order to research, evaluate, and prepare reports associated with the costs and associated building issues of these three projects.
So, a motion as stated by Mr. Perry?
Yeah. Maybe I repeat that.
I'll just make that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kramer. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Prove five to zero, and we will take a, let's say it's 10, 12, let's go till 10:30. So, I think that should be enough time, if you can go in there, right over there to the left, everyone, and get your picture. All right, we'll call the meeting back to order. Mr. Perry, is there any unfinished business?
Just a moment to review.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
And what I'll do is, I'm going to kind of switch it. I'm going to let department heads, if there's anything in particular they have to say at this time, if you.
Yeah, just real quickly, I wanted to touch, basically, I've received a call from some of our investment bankers. And with the interest rates increasing significantly, we are looking at trying to capitalize on our investment return, basically. So, I'm going to be talking with them, and Mr. Williams as well, and Dr. St. Louis, and try to improve our return. Right now, some of the investments we have are returning 40 basis points to 1%. And of course, T-bills, the most secure investments you can have, at least on a two-year horizon, are market rating at 4.4%. I think it hit the highest rate since 2007. And so, we want to ensure that we maximize the city's investments without risk, and but obviously capitalize on the market we're in.
Okay, thank you. Any other department heads?
I think Robin may have some.
Yeah, and I think, I don't know if we can take a motion on it today, or if we probably need to put it on your next agenda, but if you want to continue with the zoning in progress for the specific uses within the downtown area, we'll need to extend that zoning in progress, because it would expire in March. So, we'd have that on your next agenda if you want to move forward with that extension. And we'd probably recommend a six-month extension because of some other tax amendments we're working on. And I don't know if they can do that today. I think it.
No, I think we had a resolution on that, so we'll need to bring forward a resolution.
All right, everyone, consensus, bring that forward. Okay. All right, for our next meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. McClellan?
We've received a request from Realized Bradenton to see if we could allow them to utilize the bathrooms at the parking garage during farmer's market, that they would be responsible for opening and closing those restrooms.
Cleaning?
We can talk to them about cleaning as well. But essentially, this is a means for them to find some cost savings associated with having porta-johns brought in every time there's a farmer's market. Originally, when the parking garage was constructed, the bathrooms were intended to be used for quote-unquote special events. And otherwise, it's locked. The only people using it right now or using those restrooms are the police department who have their office space adjacent to it, but they remain locked all the time. Question being is, do you want to consider that the farmer's market each week is a special event?
Well, I know, and I'll speak up first, because I was on the council and was for the bathrooms, and I thought they were very important, and I didn't realize we weren't using them on some different things. I think they're there. Why not use them? But we wanted to make sure that they weren't being used for other urban campers, as Mr. Polk would say.
Correct. But I don't know that I necessarily need your formal approval for it, but I wanted to make you aware of that request, and we're happy to work with them to help coordinate this.
I think it's a good idea.
Just so the council knows, they actually, under their agreement with us, provide one porta-john. And back in, I want to say, October, they had come to me and asked me if we could increase that. And so, we authorized an additional three porta-johns and hand cleaning stations, I think, two of those. And they're located right outside the drive pad that enters our garage for the hotel parking. There's one there, and I think then there's two on Third, as well as hand stations. And the cost to the city was about $6,000 up through February. That agreement runs out, I want to say, in February coming up this month. And so, I thought it was prudent, because we have so much success with public market, to go ahead and do it. You know, there's a lot of people, they need bathrooms and the like. And so, we still may look at supplementing their agreement with porta-johns as well. Those two bathrooms that are at the end, of course, they face each other. There'd be two there, but they still probably need some further south, you know, on Third Street, Fourth Street Ave, I should say, for those crowds.
Well, let's assume it'll work, and if there's issues that come up.
These issues was basically cleaning and opening and closing, and that type of thing, understandably so. You know, we don't have really too many vagrants, homeless people that would do bad things in there during the public market, but we certainly wouldn't want those to be open other than during very restricted times.
Yeah, I would just say, I would think that the public restroom should be open to the public for that, for the public market. It just makes sense to me, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other department heads, Ms. Chief? Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't really have much, but I did want to take this opportunity to introduce one of my staff members.
Good morning.
I'm going to let her introduce herself to you all.
Hi, I'm Courtney Cruz. I've worked with the Braden Police Department since 2015. I was promoted to sergeant almost two years ago, and I was transferred over to the Criminal Investigative Division, where I'm currently a detective sergeant. I manage the detectives there currently and the investigation unit.
Turn around, just so the camera can see it too, so everybody can see her. Thank you. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing, saying the same thing over and over and over and over. But I just wanted to give you all an opportunity, because this just stands as one concrete example of the fake news, the nonsense, the ridiculous statements that are made online, in person, in this meeting as well. I'm not prepared to talk about the Ware case, but know that we are deeply involved in that case. As for the Betty Lou Rose comment that she's never. As for the Betty Lou Rose comment that she's never received a copy of the complaint, I have two lieutenants and a captain that will attest to the fact that she was handed that complaint. I, I'm not going to waste my breath when he and others are here, because I'm not going to waste my breath on them. But I will waste my breath on you all, because you're worth it. So, so that's really all I have today, thank you, have a great day. And now you all have a face with a name, and you see that she really is a supervisor, she really is doing the job. It's unfortunate that he undervalued who she was, probably for obvious reasons that we probably all, several of us here can, you know, feel, thanks.
One of the comments, how happy I am to Chief Buck Courtney up, because that first line supervisor, the sergeant in a special investigations function is so important to keep things moving in the right direction, to keep the officers basically in compliance with certain rules, regulations, constitutional policing. And sometimes when you have the same blood in those units for a long period of time, sometimes it's not the best thing. So, it's so good to have some fresh faces, some new attitudes and things like that, kudos to you and sergeant.
And also, just.
She does a great job too, I should bet, she does an exceptional job down there, great job.
Also, congratulations, Chief, on your award coming tomorrow at Tiger Bay. You know, the Pat Glass Law Enforcement Award is, obviously, everybody knows who Pat Glass was in this community, if you've been here for any time, and a great person, as well as a great community person. So, we're honored that you're getting that in this community, and we appreciate it. And I hope other good things will come out later today, so they'll be out, so.
Thank you.
I'm very confident of that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other department heads? Thank you, we'll start the council reports in Ward Three.
Never know where it's going to go. One of the things I wanted to, let me get my notes, some of the public comment. The chief just addressed someone who addressed me, so no need on that. Mr. Landefeld spoke about the meetings we've been having, the community meetings we've been having to discuss the potential redevelopment of this property. I know he's been at all of them, I heard he's been at all of them, I didn't make it to one, so way to go. You know, it was, it was put out there overnight that it was a failure for the elected officials. And I don't, part of me doesn't even want to address it, but how's it a failure when we have almost fifty people in this room from the public that want to talk about what we're thinking about, what we're, what we're discussing? We're not, we haven't, we haven't made up our minds on any of this. But for them to be able to come out and speak, how's that a failure? That's democracy, that's America, that you get to freely speak about these things. And I think it's just a narrow-mindedness of some people that think that if the public isn't agreeing with us, then we aren't succeeding. We're definitely succeeding in hearing what people have to say. I'm, I was happy to host it last night, I'll be happier when the air is on next time, but.
Where is Bill?
Where is Bill?
Lock down the door.
Not his fault. But, you know, we have another meeting on Friday down at Brayden Tropical Palms, that's a pretty, I guarantee it's going to be pretty well-attended, because bit of a captive audience there, they're all right there. But it's just, it's nice to hear people, and like the mayor said, there's a lot of people come over and over, which Mr. Landefeld is one of those. But they have, they have different views, and they have different opinions, and we need to hear that. We need to know what everybody's thinking. And that still doesn't mean we're not going to have a very difficult decision on this. This is all, it's all weighing on us, I think, every day, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ward Four.
I will just note that when I wrote the, my first council corner, that we were undetermined about the time of the next Ward Four meeting. So, that is confirmed for noon on Monday, February twenty-seven, at Three Keys Brewery and Gastropub. I'll also note that the selection of venues for the Ward Four meetings was reflective of my desire to support local businesses in that area. And given that Ward Four is pretty heavily residential, that's how we came up with the location choices. I'm also very excited about the community involvement. And I think it's worth noting, in addition to the physical membership that we've had at the meetings, my understanding is that the portal has been used very much by citizens to be able to, to note their comments and their thoughts. And to the extent that anyone does doubt whether anyone's listening, I, I think it's pretty clear, if you pay attention to the meetings, that in my observation, even the tone of our conversation has changed. The things that we have really focused on, you know, with green space and revitalization, and trying to weigh what is going to ultimately work or not work, I think those conversations on the dais have become pretty responsive to some of the, some of the comments that we've been hearing at the meetings. And I'll just note finally, too, that to the extent that there is, you know, a portion of the residents that don't want anything to change, I think it's important to note that if, that we can't stop people from moving here, that's not something that we can actually do. So, my opinion is that to do nothing would be akin to, again, reactive policymaking, and it would be more to our detriment to not plan for the growth that is already happening. Because I think I've said many times, as a real estate attorney, they're here, they're sitting at my closing table, and many of them are not from Florida originally, so that's, I guess, pretty much it. I'm, I'm excited that we're planning.
Thank you, Ms. Coachman?
Thank you. Well, on that note about meetings, if anyone has heard, the, the meeting that was held in Ward Five may not be as well, had not been as well-attended as the other meetings. But I have to say this, actually, Ward Five had the opportunity to hear about the possibility of selling City Hall, and what it could do in terms of generating more tax funding. And it actually happened before the end of the year, it just kind of happened up. The CRA was having a great meeting with the community to look at revitalizing a part of Ninth Avenue, referred to as MLK, and kind of revitalizing it, because it used to be a business district, mainly black-owned businesses that were eliminated when the street was widened. So, at that meeting, it was well-attended, and the discussion had been made. So, a lot of people in Ward Five, those that are concerned, were at that meeting. So, I'm guessing that when the meeting was scheduled last week, or few, some time ago, a little bit ago, a lot of people did not attend, and it was a short meeting. And the reason why is because all the meetings we had had prior to that seems to go a little long, because the presentation was a little long. And my meeting was the first time there was the attempt to shorten it. And so, shortened presentation, very few people except for against. So, it wasn't that Ward Five doesn't care, it was because they pretty much already heard it. And secondly, if by chance, some of you have been given the impression that my meeting was volatile, it was not. As always, it's great to hear from the community, and I've said that time and time again. And one thing I hope that the community is seeing is this council is holding those meetings all across the city, whereas I don't think that has been done before. I'm, I'm not certain, but it hasn't been done before. So, it's been great, though, hearing from the community, good, better, and different, and just welcoming to hear more.
Mrs. Coachman, and I'm going to make a statement on what you said, that the meeting might have got volatile. Obviously, I've been at every meeting, up until last night, I was there, but wasn't there the whole time, and I'll go through that in a little while. But you were verbally attacked by two individuals that was very inappropriate, and you did nothing to apologize for, other than hold your ground and defend yourself. So, I respect you for doing that, and you, you deserve to do it. You should not be, and anybody on this dais should not be attacked by individuals the way you were attacked inappropriately. And so, don't, don't you apologize for doing something to stand up for yourself. And, and, you know, if that has to come somewhere else, I will say that as well, so thank you for standing up for yourself, so. All right, Ward One?
Just one more little shout-out to Tim Polk. I mean, I, 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 I'm very sad, and I miss, he'd always forget, he'd always leave his cellphone on, and the drums would start playing at all the meetings, so anytime I hear your drums, Tim, I'll be thinking about you. But I also, I had a wonderful opportunity last week to go up with the chamber to Tallahassee. And I want you to know that we're working hard for everybody. We had some great meetings, I don't know if I'm stealing the mayor's comments, but we had great meetings with DOT, Department of Environmental Protection, and with all of our legislators. And I'm, you know, I'm excited about what's ahead in the future. We, we've got great leadership here in the state, and I think we've got great leadership here in our community too. So, I think it's all good. The public meetings, I held my public meeting this week, and I want to thank Bayside Community Church and Pastor Mark Childers for hosting us. It was a, it was a very nice venue to be at. We had a lot of people and a lot of comments, and, and I, like everyone else, have been listening to the comments. I really appreciate people taking their evening, or whatever time of day they go, to come and, and be a part of the decision, because, you know, it shows that you care, you care about our community, we all care about our community. And so, you being a part of the communication and the talk, it means a lot to us. And I also want to say that there's a lot of passion out there. And I'm, and I am listening, and some of the, and a lot of the challenges that I think that are being brought up are coming about from possibly growth that's happened that may not be planned. I think you see a lot of the growth that's gone out east and north of the river, and that is a big part of our problem with traffic, and having to have, you know, construction take, take place outside the urban service boundary, which just puts a lot of stress. While that's county, it's, it affects all of us. And so, a lot of my, a lot of my thought process is working to, the growth will happen. It's like death, taxes, and growth. The growth is going to happen, I think we, we need to use sound planning principles in our decision. And so, again, thank you to everybody that's taking the time to bring forward their, their concerns, because I've actually changed my views on a couple of things, based on some things, so anyhow, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Barnaby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to thank everyone that gave us the gift of their time to come to the Ward Two meetings that we held. One was held at Trinity United Methodist, and I want to thank them for their hospitality. And the other was held during the day at Braydenton Christian School, and I also want to thank them for their hospitality. Trying to find places where you can accommodate a crowd, even if you don't know you're going to have a crowd, good parking, a place where we can put our, our audiovisual equipment and show everyone the same pictures, the same thing, is not as easy as it might seem. So, I want to thank, again, the administration at Trinity United Methodist and Braydenton Christian School for allowing us to do that. Also, I would like to extend my sympathies to the family of Chuck Early, Mary Ann Miller Early. We became friends in elementary school, and her husband passed unexpectedly last week. We have spoken about Tim Polk and his influence on the city, and what a gentleman he was to work with. He had the ability to hear what everyone was saying, and then consolidate it down to its essence, and to help us be able to make the best decisions for our community. So, he will be missed, as well as someone who served many times as our city attorney, Alan Prather. Because there was times where Mr. Lish was not able to be here, and Mr. Prather would step in in his stead. And he never shied away from a tough discussion. And I'm sure there were probably times that he thought, I'm going to get ahold of Bill, because Bill might have known this was coming, and he's not here to deal with it. But Alan, again, was, was here, was present, helped us through those tough times and those tough decisions. And I want to extend my sympathies to his wife Beverly and his family as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Barnaby. And obviously, all the condolences go out to all the families that have been discussed here today. And, and I think it's, you know, important, obviously, we celebrate the memories of those people and what they've done and their contributions in our community. And some people behind the scenes, and some people more out in front, so. Very heartfelt and great for that. Just going through the public meetings, and, and, you know, one of the things that I'm impressed with is the staff and what we saw as we've talked going through them. You know, we didn't know when that first one started at Central Cafe, kind of how it would go. And I think that kind of started us in a good path of what we've learned. And I know that every meeting, we have the council person open up, I say a little bit, and then turn it over to Mr. Perry. And that has worked very well in going through. We have had some individuals that come and try to sometimes cause a little trouble or get some drama, but, you know, you don't mind when you're working with the community. And I think the general community, and the one people that I've talked to after those meetings, see that. And a lot of them say, you know, we understand. And I, and I think even some of the people that I call frequent flyers, which is a good thing, are seeing that this isn't predetermined, and what's going to happen is actually being thought about and listened to. You know, we know traffic is an issue in this community. We know that most of the traffic in this community isn't our traffic, you know, but it is our traffic when it comes to our city. And I think a perfect example of that is Monday, when there was no, you know, school, and it was a holiday. The Soto and Green Bridge were virtually empty. So, you know, in the morning coming in, and in the evening going out, because I can look right out my window and see that all day long. And I do agree that sometimes, and, and even on school day, when there's no school, but it's not a holiday, the traffic is a lot lighter. So, you know, it does have a lot to do with the school, we've talked about that over the years, working with them, trying some different things. But, but overall, you know, the meetings have been so productive, because we're hearing things, we're hearing some little things. And I think even some of the people, more than not, aren't necessarily against this individual project. They're against other things and happening, and as I've said at many meetings, eighty-one percent of people in a city our size doesn't want change. But ninety percent of those people that said that they didn't want change, want something different for their downtown. So, you know, we've got to figure out that balance, and I think that's important. Last night, you know, obviously, I was here and I opened the meeting. And again, the, the fake news propaganda that's out there on a Facebook page says that I stormed out or I left out of the meeting. My dad finally got into surgery last night at five o'clock. So, I don't ever try to bring, you know, personal stuff into it, but when you're attacked on social media with false information, you've got to put it out there. So, yes, I did come to the meeting to open it up like normal, and I've stayed at every other meeting. Last night, I had family issues to deal with. So, you know, again, fake news, propaganda, lies, you know, after four years plus dealing with that, it's just, let's get the facts out there and make an educated decision, and have positive things for our city, agree or disagree at times. We're all going to have, sometimes you're going to win, sometimes you're going to lose, that's life. But if you're working together to try to come up with the good of the whole, you know, that's where we're at, so. And that's one thing that I will always do, do the right thing for the right reason when nobody's looking. That's the most important part. Obviously, I've said this before, my kids get that now. When they were younger, they didn't always get it, but now they do as, as parents themselves, of a teenager and a ten-year-old, so. But we appreciate what everybody's doing, we have two more meetings, I believe, and we'll have some other community meetings that we're still going out to that are at service clubs and different things of that nature. But, but, you know, we're here to listen, we're going to evaluate. And, and again, we made some good decisions today to move forward and keep the process. to move forward and keep the process going, and I know that's something Mr. Perry has said, I've got to have some tools in my belt to keep working forward, so it doesn't slow the process, so we appreciate what you've done today, and nothing further.
Mr. Mayor, one thing, this is the first official meeting we've had since the regatta.
Oh, yes.
Weeks ago.
Totally, we gotta say.
We all fried.
Official meeting.
I wrote it down and walked right past on my notes. A big thank you to everyone who came to enjoy it, but a bigger thank you to all the city's staff.
Right.
Who was here, the planning process that takes place, really, with public safety and public works, that starts in October, November, to get everything on board with what we need to be, and it's not just our staff, it's, you know, the community partners, our partners in Palm Meadow, our partners with the county, that, and national, federal levels, too, that get everything together, so everybody can be safe and enjoy a great day. Didn't end how we wanted, with the drone show being postponed, I was, I was positioned out on the dock to try to watch it, and just got rained on, so.
Rain and wind with drones.
Yeah, yeah, it was gonna be, it was a bad scenario.
Yep. Also, you know, that will be coming up soon for the council to look at for the next year or two, as we go forward, that'll be coming up, and then also, hundred years of baseball in, in Bradenton, and of course, the Pirates have been fifty-five years of that, so spring training starts on Saturday, so come out and enjoy that, and many games to go, and hopefully the weather, you know, we've set some records over the years, in crowds, the last couple of years it hasn't been, but, but, you know, if we can keep the weather away from us this year at the right times, I believe it could be a record-breaking year with the hundred-year crowd, and a hundred, a hundred years of baseball, so, anything else? I think that we get so many things going on, you kind of miss a few.
Yeah.
But thank you, Josh. Mr. Kramer? All right, we'll be adjourned.